Emily strives to break the negative cycles that exist in her students' lives and supports them to lead positive changes in their communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby recognize and commend Emily Klepphal on her selection as the January 2024 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and I also want to thank, I know we have some representation from the district here, including your superintendent and principal. And this is a resolution, so before we hear a few words from you, we're going to approve this. So we'll see if we can get a motion in a second. We have it. Please cast your votes, and I wish to vote aye. All right, well, congratulations again, Emily, and we'd love to hear a few words from you.
As it said in the resolution, I've been teaching at Putnam City for eight years. I've wanted to do that since I was a little girl, in my own daisy and brownie trupe myself. For the past eight years, I've been fulfilling a childhood dream, and I could not think of doing anything other than that. With the supportive administration, all the way from superintendent to building principal, I've been so lucky. And also with supportive representatives at the state level and the city level really make our jobs fulfilling. And like I said, I've been living my childhood dream, and this is a fulfillment of little Emily's biggest dreams that she could have ever had. So as you think about voting this year, remember people like me, and remember the little ones that we represent, because we can't do our jobs unless everyone supports us. And I'm so lucky to have been so supported so well by so many. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Emily. Thank you. Okay. We also have appointments today on the Office of the Mayor agenda for the Game and Fish Commission and MAPS for Investment and Operating Trust. These are both reappointments. We could take them with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 3D1 and 2 are going to make more sense after a presentation under City Manager Reports. They also include an executive session, which we typically handle at the end of the meeting anyway, so I'm going to hold these items until the end of the meeting. Okay, that means we're moving on to item 4, items from council. We'll start with item 4A. This is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted today with an emergency, declaring a 725-day moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for PUDs, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to let Councilman Stonecypher explain.
Thank you, Mayor. This goes hand in hand with the new sign code that we are looking at today in a public hearing, but it's a procedural issue, and it's one that the municipal councilor's office is recommending that we implement, so we can deal with a scenic corridor specifically pertaining to Lake Hefner Parkway. And so at this time, I would move for the ordinance to be introduced, and then I'll move for an emergency.
Okay, so this is for introduction and passage, and then we'll have the emergency vote. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
At this time, your honor, go ahead for the emergency, please.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. This is for an emergency, requires seven affirmative votes, which it receives, and it passes unanimously as well. Thank you, Councilman Stonecypher. Item 4B is a resolution directing the city manager to provide certain information to the city council regarding the current Oklahoma County jail facility site and all other potential sites. And this is authored by council members Cooper, Hammond, and Nice, so I'll yield to them in whatever order they might wish for some explanation.
Well, I will sort of start and just sort of say my piece about wanting this specific, doing this through a resolution process. I know some of our council members last council meeting asked for some particular information that was also of interest to me, but I had been in conversations over the last month with the different county commissioners, some of the folks from the oversight committee for the bond oversight committee to build the new jail facility, and just in general feel like we're all having a lot of disparate conversations, where some people say they've talked to the county engineer, and so they know that a particular site won't work for particular reasons. But then other folks say, no, I've talked to some architects, and they think it could work, but nobody's really provided some clearer information about sort of the particulars of different sites, particularly in my view, the downtown location and surrounding properties in my mind have not been very well vetted. It's my understanding as well, sort of to add to that, that surrounding property owners of the current jail site had not even been approached about an interest in potentially selling their property until just this last couple of weeks, and not by anyone at the county. And so the fact that at some point the city council will likely be weighing in on this process through zoning and, you know, different kinds of potential, like special permits for land use, and because the current jail site is in my ward, and I am particularly interested in keeping it in the vicinity of where it currently is. But I think because of all the other sites that have been talked about, it's hard to keep track of them all, because they kind of constantly are going on an agenda or off an agenda. I know the city has offered some sites in response to the county's RFP, and so just to have something a little more formalized and consistent, so that when a new site is offered up for potential consideration at the county, that us as a council have as much information as possible, and that we're all kind of working from the same information. Because like I said, it feels like a lot of stuff is sort of being passed through the grapevine and telephone, but not necessarily kind of doing that diligence of, okay, let's actually really figure out what different sites do have the capacity for or not. And so that's kind of my piece of wanting to introduce a resolution to collect some of that information about site size, preference, ability for the location or surrounding properties to meet the preference for two-story facility, and all those sorts of things, things that we'll have to consider around zoning. So that's my piece, and I don't know if the other council members, sponsoring council members, want to have any words.
Well, for me, it's clearly about accountability on our city side and transparency. And the reason I say that is because, as we just heard from Councilwoman Hammond about locations, some of those locations that have been offered up are in harmful sites, and they could be detriment to certain communities within our city. And therefore, we're trying and hoping to understand what these metrics are of just saying, here's a site, and this is why we think it's best, only because it's the acreage, but what are the other factors other than satisfying the land acreage requirement of what this is asking for? And also, as we have not received information the last time this happened, after the fact, when, in my opinion, as one of those council members who would be directly impacted by a location, depending on where those sites reside, without having that information, because clearly, my residents and neighbors, even my mother, is going to ask what's going on. And I need to have an answer for those folks when they stop me to say, this is what I know, instead of saying, I know nothing. In knowing that there are sites that have been offered up by the city that we have not at least been privy to, I think that's very disappointing that we are unable to relay that message to our community members. And with this resolution, hopefully, we'll be able to do that and work together, because this is impacting our city tremendously by the decision the county is making, and this impacting our neighbors and our residents more so in that same realm. So I'm hoping that we will all be able to say, yes, these are things that we've asked for, because I agree, at the last meeting, it seems like most of us were all asking for the same thing, and this is what this resolution asks for.
And then I'll just add, as a co-author, you know, Councilwoman Hammond, with this existing facility residing in their ward, Jo Beth and then Nikki came to me and asked if I would join them, and, you know, really, I can give you a pretty grand speech about criminal justice reform and the direction we could be heading. I won't, because I suspect when this comes back to us, that'll be the time for that. Instead, I'll say simply, this resolution is a formality, is what I see. This is truly formalizing the conversation we saw take place on this horseshoe two weeks ago, where council members across the political spectrum simply are requesting metrics, which was a word we heard a lot during our MAPS for conversation about, okay, if we're going to build housing to interrupt the cycle of poverty and homelessness, then we should have metrics about what happens when we build that housing and we connect folk with wraparound services. Where then do we see the decline in our homelessness numbers, or the people who are unhoused? So I just think this is just continuing that work of a responsible body asking for data to drive decisions, right? I just think it's that simple. And, you know, I have stayed out of the county jail conversation to the very best of my ability, because we have so much work to do at the city level, so much repairing of the breach, you know, in terms of our neighborhoods. And that's just where I've been focused, but now knowing that this item will eventually make its way to this body in terms of, as you just heard, zoning and permit, then I think at this earliest stage, it is worth our time to receive data about, okay, how much will a site cost? How close to it is public transportation, access to food, access to the basic needs of the individual? And I guess I would conclude simply by saying this, I mentioned it at the last meeting. We have a gentleman who, as you've read in the news, sat on death row. He now has the unenviable status of sitting on death row longer than anyone else in these United States. It turns out he was innocent. When they released him, they being the state of Oklahoma, stage four cancer, he will not be with us very much longer. The state of Oklahoma owes him $175,000, and he has received not a penny of that. And when they released him, they released him. They did not say, and here are the support services to guide you back to stability. They just, poof, you're out there. So there was no public transportation to connect him to housing, to connect him to food, to prescriptions he might need, to things that might stabilize his existence. And that's someone who was innocent. Imagine it was a human being who had in fact committed a crime, right? What interventions do you make upon that person's release to prevent them from going right back into the jail or the prison? So it is important, in my estimation, that wherever this new facility goes, if we're going to have one, which I guess we are, that it be as connected to those, and I'll just keep using this word, stabilizing, stabilizing institutions as possible. And when you look, for instance, at the current county jail, you see its proximity to public transportation, municipal courts, OKCPD, county courts, right? It's all within walking distance. You're not just put out in Choctaw, Oklahoma. And it's no shade to Choctaw, I graduated there. So I'm just saying it's very disconnected from the next bus stop. So I would like to see, site by site by site, what are the metrics that are going to help the county determine its location, and then ultimately help us decide whether or not we should approve any zoning or special permits for it. This is not a debate about the ideology of incarceration. It is simply a formality about metrics.
So, yeah, I brought this item up at the last council meeting, and I appreciate the resolution. I'm not going to be able to support it. I'm not a big fan of resolutions, and I feel like prematurely, we're trying to put the onus on the city manager. The county is looking at different locations, and I know I've been talked to, addressed to, as I'm sure many of us have, and, well, what do you think about this? What do you think about that location? And what I'm really bringing up is, I'm not going to decide on any location until we have those metrics. That's what I'm looking for. And if you're going to rule out certain sites, then I need to know why is that site ruled out? If you find certain sites more favorable, I want to know why those are more favorable. But in my mind currently, I mean, that still resides with the Oklahoma County, and I'm not speaking badly of them at all. I mean, the task that they're facing is huge, but that's really what I was trying to imply to. But I do appreciate the thoughts on that, that we all need good metrics to go off of before we make any type of decision. So, thank you.
Okay.
I guess I'll just say in response, I mean, I appreciate those words. I don't think the county's doing that. And when I've spoken with the various county commissioners, I get different information from each of them. And so this was sort of our attempt to, we don't control the county commissioners, but we can ask the city manager to do some of this fact-finding for us, to provide this information to us, so that we are all working, because I worry that we can talk about metrics all day, but if we don't have them written down and handed to us in a report, that we're just kind of doing it by word of mouth. And truly, literally, when I was told that the, by, through the grapevine, that the current site wouldn't work, I asked, well, what metrics was that decided by? And it was just told to me, oh, well, I think the chair for the board of the oversight committee said that. I met with him, he said, actually, no, I think it would work. The county commissioners don't think it will, but nobody has a site plan saying, this is what it would look like, and it's not going to meet our parameters. So that's where I feel a little bit at a loss to weigh in on any conversation when I feel like I'm sort of being given the runaround of this information, and the city manager is the person who can help us do that, because we, as we all know, cannot direct the county commissioners to do anything. So, thank you.
I'm in agreement, I'm sorry, Councilman Nice, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, I'm in agreement with you on the runaround piece of it. I just, I expect that to come from the county when they make their decision. I mean, if they're doing it based off metrics, they'll be able to supply us with those metrics. And believe me, everything you said, I don't disagree with.
Well, I'll just close with this. Our city manager gets compensated very well to execute our asks, and this is one of those asks that I believe is not something that is out of the normal, when asking for us to make sure we're accountable to the people that we're serving. So therefore, I'm quite confused by, we don't want to put too much on our city manager. So again, you know, and the fact that it's not only the city manager that's doing this, there's an assistant city manager that is helping to identify these sites as well. So all of the onus is not fully upon our city manager in this effort. And these things, again, are very harmful in relation to certain communities, certain demographics, and I think, not think, I know, as council members, these are things we should be looking for and being protective of, too, because, again, the health, safety, and welfare of our constituents resides within our hands. And we have the power to ensure that our city manager is doing that on our behalf. Again, we voted unanimously, some of us did, some of us did not, for him to do this service to execute our business for the city, and this is just a piece of what we're asking for our community and our city and the people that reside within these impacted communities who have already been identified with these numerous sites, that we as a city understand, and council members understand, what is happening in order for us to relay that message to our residents? Because half the time when I'm watching the news, I'm like, I have no idea where that came from and why. And then when we ask, sometimes when we ask the city manager, we don't get the answer that is a straightforward answer. We're getting talked around in order for everybody to be protected, and it's time out for that. It's time for us to really come to the table and have these discussions and be able to fruitfully agree to disagree, or just talk about it, without not having all of the facts and the details. And right now, these things that have been presented in front of us, or not presented in front of us, that have just been going straight to the county, have not at least been vetted to us to let us know this is coming. And that's very disappointing for me, especially for the fact that I have had to go to the county commissioners' board meetings at least three times, to talk about, as a resident in District One, in this county, of the impacts of me as a resident being impacted by the potential sites within our communities and within the areas. So I'm hearing from the people, because I'm with the people. And our city manager, again, gets compensated quite well for us to ask for him to do this work.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
So as someone who teaches rhetoric, I'm going to preface it by saying this. I hear what you're saying, Todd, and so my next words, I'm not sure they are, I don't know that I'm saying them to persuade you. It sounds like you've made up your mind, so it is what it is. So these next words, then, are more of, maybe some of the other councilors want to come along for the ride with us on this, but if not, this is for the audience, both watching in this crowd and at home. Let me tell you why this matters so much to me. I just pulled up, I literally just typed into Google, Oklahoma County jail locations, and the very first article is from K4, and it has the list. And nowhere on this article does it give one single metric, not one, not one, when it mentioned Luther, when it mentions Grand Boulevard. There is not one why for any location here. That's K4, that's not peer-reviewed, academic. Do you see what I mean? Like, this is, if you're an average, everyday Oklahoma Cityan, and you just do a simple Google search, this is what you will find first and foremost, and you will find not one single reason why this list, not one. What you will see is a back and forth from the mayor of Luther and other residents saying, I do or do not support it, but there is no why. Without formalizing the whys at this level, at the city level, what will come, mark my words, what will come, is a lot of rumor and misinformation, and y'all know I'm saying the truth. And let me go further, let me lay all cards on the table. I attended a town hall last night at Metro Tech. It was palpable, the tension in that room, because what, it became clear, when you have the daughter of Clara Looper in that room, putting this decision within the context of the civil rights movement, when she is saying she is worried we are going to place a new jail on the east side of the city, where the majority of our city's black residents live, a part of town that for decades did not see investment in its infrastructure and its neighborhoods, and I know we can say the same about Southside, where today, rather than the, what we see is so much Hispanic, Latino population, working-class white, working-class black, my students, right? And they too not invested in. And that is another site on this right now that people are very concerned about. If one of those sites gets selected, mark my words, the narrative will be that once more, government. And they won't care which level of government. When I was knocking doors, and I'm sure each of you experiences too, when you talk to your residents, sometimes residents don't know which level of government's doing what, whether it's county, whether it's city, whether it's state. They just know they are doing something. The pronoun "they," they, the government. And if one of these sites gets chosen, the argument will be that once more, they are doing it to us again. They are not investing in our schools. They are not investing in an ounce of prevention. They are not investing in our neighborhoods. They are not investing in data-driven stuff that would prevent crime, reduce crime, not eliminate it. That is impossible. We are human beings, we do things that sometimes are outside the bounds. But I'm telling you, the narrative will be, they are doing it again. Y'all may not like what I am saying right now, but I promise you, that is coming, and I'm suggesting to you all that the best chance we have as a body that many residents trust, they trust city government way more than they trust the other levels of government. I hear it all the time when I'm knocking doors. And I think because we have that trust, we have the capacity, and quite frankly, the responsibility, to do due diligence, so that the next time someone like me does a Google search, it comes up and it says, here's the information we know about the sites right now, about their access to public transportation, the municipal courts, the county courts, every bit of the services that someone who has recently experienced incarceration would experience, here are the metrics guiding each one of these things. That's all I'm asking. And in the absence of that, I worry that suddenly a site will get chosen, the narrative will get baked, there will be a packed crowd here at the city council when we have to vote, and the only metrics we might have then are just for that site, and we will not have all the reasons about how we arrived at that conclusion. So we can vote no on this today, that is everyone's option. What I am telling you is watch what I have just guessed at play out almost word for word, scouts-honored. So we can help avoid some of that right now, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, just to add on to that, I think some of us, his words have already been, I won't say targeted, that's a bad word.
People go that though, right?
Maybe, maybe. Already are already in that realm, which is why I brought up the issue of metrics and why it's important to me, and that, for me personally, until I have metrics, I've said I'm not going to vote. I just don't think we need to do a resolution, putting the onus on top of the city manager is the only difference. So, again, thank y'all for bringing it up.
Okay, we have a resident who signed up to speak on this item, Jess Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, City Council. I support this resolution for the simple fact that there's a lot of misinformation. One thing that's occurring in, I think, this county and city is that the county government is making you all look awfully good. And Mr. Stone, I go to all the citizens' bond oversight meetings, I've met with Steve Mason half a dozen times, the commissioners, more than that, unfortunately, and various other involved people, and there is no metric-based... And there is no metric-based process that they're undertaking. There was an attempt to set it up through the citizens' bond oversight committee, but for some reason inexplicable to me, they, the county commission has just been directly receiving sites through the RFP process that are submitted by property owners or government entities. And because of this, this pressure cooker of a PR scenario, everyone's in, in, you know, upset, there's just a ton of blaming other groups, and their favorite group to blame is the city. And I'm sure that some of that is exaggerated or potentially fabricated, I don't know. And so, I'm not here to lay allegations, but the number of times that I've heard that the city of Oklahoma City is presenting the northeast Oklahoma City locations has increased in volume. And that, as someone invested chiefly in the concern and interest of the northeast Oklahoma City community drove my appearance today because that's what they're saying. And like I said, I, I can't speak to the veracity of that, actually find it hard to believe, because I, I think that the city of Oklahoma City would appreciate the, um, the measure of resolve of leaders like Ms. Marilyn Looper, Hildreth, and Pastor Reed, who I've worked with now for half a decade, who I've never seen more deeply committed to opposition. And I think they've gone to extend that opposition and support to the Dell City area, because it's another minority marginalized community. And so, this is really in the interest, for me, of keeping our city together.
Thirty seconds, please.
Not, not letting the counties, um, process or lack thereof drag all of us into an unnecessary, acrimonious controversy, when we really could have a metric-based, metric-driven process to assess a site and find a site that's best for all of us. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, we could take a motion. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Fails three to five. Item 4C is a resolution approving travel expenses for council members Nice, Bradley, Carter, Stone, Seifer, and Peck to attend the National League of Cities meeting in March in Washington, DC. Take a motion on that item. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Six affirmative votes are required for approval. Passes unanimously. All right, item five, city manager reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. So, the first report we have is, as was presented, discussed before, the presentation of the classification and compensation study that was conducted using consultant, the, the human resources department helped lead that. So, Amy Bedera, our chief human resource officer, will give us an update and just an overview of what we're implementing as a result of this study.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Amy Bedera, Chief HR Officer for the City of Oklahoma City. As Craig mentioned, the city recently concluded our first class comp study since 2011. And I wanna thank the HR staff, Jason Long, Total Rewards, Veronica Blakely, and Keisha, Keisha Seward, they've been a very long process to be able to get to today's point. And I also wanna thank Siegel, our consultant, for the work on the project. The goals for the class comp study was to help us modernize job titles, job descriptions, and update our minimum qualifications. We also conducted a review of the jobs that were shared across the various departments. Also wanted to be able to make sure that we developed a compensation strategy and policy review, and then we were able to finally compare the city salaries to both select peer groups as well as private sector where applicable. To summarize the 55-page report that was in the agenda, our consultant, Siegel, reviewed over 1,600 positions through position questionnaires for nearly 800 jobs. We compared 125 benchmark positions at all levels across the organization, and we compared our positions with private sector, again, where applicable. We selected 15 cities that are different than our typical peer city benchmark that we use for our collective bargaining agreements within the organization, but that, so that way we could compare both metro, regional, and national data. We asked 15 of the cities, 11 responded, and that, we also, the, the consultant collected that data and then created a scoring system to help us evaluate our classifications. Within percentiles with midpoint, so if you take a minimum qualific, the minimum range of a pay range, and then a maximum, you need to create a midpoint, and that's really was the benchmark that the city used, was our midpoint. When we looked at the percentiles within the overall pos, the population of a geographic or specific industry, that was the, the data that we compared. The recommendation from Siegel was to increase classifications that scored below the 95th percentile. So, if it was 96 to above that percentile with the midpoint, we kept the wages as is. The consultant's findings was that 75% of the city wage ra, wage ranges were at or above market, and again, a lot of that goes back into the recent wage investments that we've made over the last three years. The city's salary midpoint is 111% of the market as an overall. We did have 57 positions that were recommended either a title change or a classification change. A lot of that goes back into some of our skilled trade industries. And for that, and that will be a, a population increase for 300 of our employees that will have a, a wage rate increase. Reserves were set aside at the launch of the project to fund the recommendation, and the projected need for this investment is 1.5 million. Of note, no employee will see a decrease as a result of the study, and February 1st is the, is the projected effective date for the classification changes. And the city is reviewing our options to analyze positions going forwards, we don't have such a long wait between classification studies. And it, just thank you for the time to be able to cover the classification compensation study, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have several other reports that are on this morning. Just make a couple of comments on a couple of these on sales tax. We were, we did have strong sales tax check, if you just look at the percentage, it was a little bit below the target overall for the year. And a lot of times, it's just like, we try not to focus just on one individual month, but looking at the full, full effect of like longer periods of time, like three months or six months. So, throughout the first six months of the year, or through, through January, actually, we're at 2.3% growth. Our projection for the year is about 2% growth. We're currently about $2 million ahead of target. We will get an update at our budget workshop from Russell Evans, our economist, to give us more information there. But so far, we're about $2 million over target for sales and use, use tax at this point in the year. We're gonna continue to monitor this and keep the council aware of any changes that we see. Hotel ta, tax is likewise doing well, about 4.8% above prior year and about $447,000 over target. We also have the investment report, the quarterly investment report the treasurer's office provides, and just wanna recognize the great work they do in managing and protecting our funds and the way they invest those. So, all of that information's there. If there's individual questions on any of that, we're glad to respond.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Maybe this is the appropriate time, if I need to wait till the very, very end of the meeting, I will do that. But since we're in the city managers moment, that resolution, seeing it not passed, Councilman Stone, two weeks ago, asked still for metrics. Will we, will we be getting them from you?
I emailed those out.
Oh, we, so they're in an email?
Yeah, they're in an email.
Oh, no, those are the metrics the county is using.
Correct.
And it's only about one site. So, I wouldn't say this is what I was hoping for.
Request last week was for the metrics the county is using, like, what are their metrics that they're using? And so, we provided that, and then the comparison to the current jail site, and that's included in that one email.
But not for all the sites that are on the...
Not for all the sites, no.
So, that's what I'm saying, we don't have that. So, I, I, was that not what you were asking for, Councilman Stone, was for all the sites? I, I've just clarified, I'm, I'm confused.
For me, it's about all the pertinent sites.
Yes.
I mean, some of them are next right away, it's not worth going in, doing a bunch of research on, I think we can all agree on that. But it's about the pertinent sites. And I, I would think that would still come from, you know, the county eventually. I know right now, they're so involved in executive session and things like that, I don't think they can release that information until they get done through the executive session part of it. At least, that's what I've been told. Like, some of the other council people, I've been in communications with county commissioners, engineers, different things like that. Just trying to start my own way of getting some of that information, but a lot of it isn't available from the county yet, understandably so. And it will be, in my opinion, it will be forthcoming. If it's not forthcoming, then frankly, I can't take any action on anything.
Well, let me say, last week, there were council members here that didn't have a problem meeting with those same, or at least a couple of those county commissioners, and we still don't have that information for us to be able to collectively talk and agree. And then, we wouldn't have to have a resolution presented for you all to say no to if we were talking. And, and I think it's very important for the public to realize also that our mayor voted against this accountability measure, and, and these are the reasons why we are asking for transparency and asking for the things that we are asking for when it comes to our communities being represented and being very vulnerable because our city is not being upfront with information.
And that concludes city manager reports.
It does.
Thank you, Craig. All right, item six, Journal of Council Proceedings, we have items A and B we can take with one motion. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item seven, a request for uncontested continuances. There's one listed on the agenda, item 11D, that's deferred to March 12th. What else might we have, Mr. City Manager?
We have several items that are on, starting on page 14, on 11T1, unsecured structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 1301 West Britton Road, the owner is secured. Item B, 13124 Cedar Springs Road, the owner is secured. Item C, 5220 Creekwood Terrace, the owner is secured. Item E, 2512 Southeast 12th Street, the owner is secured. Item I, 3532 Northwest 22nd, the owner is secured. Item K, 725 Southeast 28th Street, the owner is secured. Item P, 627 Northwest 89th Street, the owner is secured. And then, on item 11U1 on page 15, all of these items are stricken from the agenda. Item A, 13124 Cedar Springs Road, owner is secured. Item D, 2512 Southeast 12th, the owner is secured. Item G, 6,000 Northwest 19th Street, the owner is secured. And item J, 627 Northwest 89th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items I have.
All right, thank you. Item eight, revocable permits and events, and we have a, item A, joint revocable permit with Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and Red Coyote Running and Fitness to hold the Red Coyote Puppy Love 5K, and we have John Oceland here.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Red Coyote is very excited to kick off the 2024 health and fitness season with our first event of the year. The Red Coyote Puppy Love 5K benefits the 405 Animal Rescue. It is to kick off to our 5K and full and half marathon training programs for the memorial. It is out at Lake Hefner. We were originally planning to have a Valentine-themed run, and after a quick poll, discovered that people like dogs more than humans sometimes. So, we invited, we're gonna have an appreciation of, a lot of people run with their dogs, walk with their dogs. This is an opportunity for people to do that in a great environment and celebrate the 405 Animal Rescue, an opportunity for them to work some adoptions. They've got a, a great gathering of animal-themed vendors, should be a great time. We just have our fingers crossed for the kind of weather we had last year, which was awesome, and we invite all of you guys to come join us on, on February 11th.
All right, and this is in words one, two, and eight, so anyone feel free to jump in.
I appreciate all your events. It's good for the city, it's good for a healthier way of life. I'll move for approval at this time.
All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you all so much, have a great day.
All right, we'll recess the council meeting, we convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E we can take with one motion. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have just claims and payroll, item A, but we'll go ahead and vote on that. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We can reconvene our council meeting, where we find ourselves on page nine, I'm sorry, page three, item nine, the consent docket. There are no scheduled presentations. Is there anything that a council member wishes to pull out for separate discussion or separate question or vote?
Yes, items A and B for separate vote.
Okay. Anything else? Well, then, we will start there. We can get a motion to pass items nine, A and B. If a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes five to two. And now, we're back on the remainder of the consent docket, which we could take a motion on. A motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to item 10, the concurrence docket, we have items A through M, we could take with one motion. A motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 2321 Northwest 35th from R1 to R2, Councilman Cooper, I just realized, has departed. So, why don't we hold that for a moment? Let's see if we can have better luck with item B. That's an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 2625 Northwest 1st from R1 to I2, Councilwoman Hammond.
Remember where my microphone button is. I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 4396 Northwest 36 from R1 and R4 to PUD 19, sorry, I really should look ahead. All right, that's also Councilman Cooper, we'll hold that. Item D was previously deferred. Item E is in Word 8, that is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 4301 Northwest 150, 50th Street from PUD 706 to PUD 1980, Councilman Stone Seifer.
I'm not aware of any protests, has, has anyone signed up to speak? I'd move for approval at this time, please.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, Councilman Cooper, I'm coming to you now with a couple of zoning items.
Well, well, well.
All right, we have item A, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 2321 Northwest 35th Street from R1 to R2, Councilman Cooper.
The applicant or anyone representing them here to speak on this item? No? Wow, okay. Well, let's have a look, shall we? Can we pull that up? Northwest 35th? So, it's just for a duplex, but the applicant's really not here? Or their counsel? Hmm, okay, well... Well, you know, on that note then, because I have not spoken with them, I'd like to defer it because I just haven't spoken with these folks, so.
Bring up a motion to defer this item. This is 11A, and you're wanting to defer it for two weeks?
That'd be great, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Appreciate you, council.
Okay, now we're going to come to you again on item C. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 4396 Northwest 36 from R1 and R4 to PUD 1978. Councilman Cooper.
Look at this, an applicant and counsel. Go ahead, tell us who you are and what you're wanting to accomplish here.
My name is Drew Cunningham. I represent the applicant. This application is for a PUD of an existing apartment complex. It was constructed in 1971. It's currently zoned R4. Of the 35 buildings, 10 of them, either a but, are within 60 feet of neighboring property that's zoned R1. And since these were constructed, the zoning regulations have changed such that those 10 buildings, if they were destroyed by a tornado, could not be rebuilt to their existing height of two stories. So the sole purpose of this PUD is to allow the reconstruction of those existing buildings to the current height of two stories each. Just to maintain the status quo, not seeking any, there's no, there's no plans in the works at all to do any construction. This is purely for forecasting purposes, underwriting purposes, insurance purposes, to make sure that what the current owners have, if it was destroyed by a tornado or any other natural disaster, it could be rebuilt to the current, current height of these buildings, maintain the current number of units in this apartment complex.
Am I right to, if I'm hearing you correctly, should we be concerned about them as they are currently?
I'm sorry?
Should we be concerned, then, about them not meeting tornado safety standards right now? Am I hearing that right?
No, it's not about any safety standards. They're existing nonconforming, so when they were built, they were conforming to the zoning regulations at the time. Since that time, the zoning regulations have changed. They're grandfathered in, and so they're existing nonconforming with the current zoning regulations now. And it has nothing to do with tornado safety. It's just the ability to reconstruct these apartment units to the current number of units that exist right now, which would require them to be, remain two stories tall.
Planning, would you mind explaining a little bit more here about this? I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right.
Sure. Jeff Bowler, Planning Director. It's, it's the ability, they want the ability to rebuild them as they are now. And because the zoning code, you know, changes over time, there was a change, I'm not sure when exactly it was, but if they were to, if something were to happen, they were to burn down or something, they would have to build them to current code, which is slightly different than, than what's actually there right now. So they want to be able to build it as it, as it is.
Sure. But what are the current codes that we are, yeah, that we're not going to address? You see what I'm saying, like?
Sure. Sarah, maybe you have to ask, help me on this one. I think it's related to the height setback.
I, and I can tell you, it's, the, the current code, it would require any building that's within 60 feet of neighboring property that's zoned R1 to only be built to one story tall. So of the existing 35 buildings, there are 10 buildings which are within 60 feet of neighboring property that's zoned R1. So those 10 buildings, if they were destroyed and, and this PUD was not passed, would only be able to be rebuilt to one story. So since they're two stories now, if something happened to them, the owner could only build one story, thus reducing the number of total units in the apartment complex because there wouldn't be enough space to build, to rebuild those units.
So this sounds like more of a concern about the proximity of something that's a second story to someone's one story and being able to look into their backyard, backyard toward a thing? Is that what I'm kind of picking up on?
Yes, and at some point, that changed, and I'm not sure when it was, but some years ago, but it does, it would impact this. And those are currently two stories. I don't think the, the planning commission didn't feel that was too much of an ask. They're not, they're not quite, they're not very high structures currently.
All right, well, thanks for walking me through that. I feel more comfortable now. For a moment there, I was like, wait, we're not going to boot scoot past some safety stuff that was passed later, so, okay. Well, with that, I would move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one question real quick, since we got a little bit out of order.
Sure.
Craig, I want to make sure we deferred item 11D at the beginning of the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry to bother you.
It was listed on the agenda that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are back in order now with item 11F. This is ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 8524 North Sooner Road from PUD 1823 and AA to PUD 1981. Councilwoman Nice.
Thank you. I signaled, sent the back call to Mr. Zizdaw. So this is an interesting development, so if you'll just help explain it, please.
Absolutely. Mark Zizdaw with Johnson and Associates, addresses when he shared an avenue. This is actually a case you would have seen last year. A family electrician business owns this property, and they have on the front portion along Sooner, just below where that C1 is, on the front of their tract, they have their family business in operation. The entirety of the back piece was rezoned to allow for three single-family lots. From the time they filed their original PUD to now, they purchased the piece that says AA within the black boundary. And so we've come back through to add more land to it, but we're still only requesting the three rural residential lots. So one lot's five acres, the other two are four acres, conforms to everything else in the original PUD. And we had no protests, and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
All right, thank you so much for that explanation. With that, I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. All right, 11G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 500 South Cemetery Road from PUD 1785 to PUD 1984. Didn't even, you're going to handle it for Councilwoman Peck, Councilwoman Carter?
Yes, sir. Anyone sign up to speak?
Nope.
Okay, and seeing no protests, she has asked that we move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 15 Southwest 25th from C, CBD, and UD to S PUD 1574 and UD. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this is really just a fairly straightforward, changing a few uses to allow for reconstruction of a building that was destroyed by a fire. So I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item I is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval. Rezoning 13128 Northwest 10th from AA to S PUD 1578. Councilman Carter for Councilwoman Peck.
And no one signed up to speak?
Correct.
Okay. And seeing no protests, she asks that we move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11J is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval. Rezoning 16501 Network Avenue from PUD 737 to S PUD 1579. Councilman Stonecifer. No one has signed up to speak.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any protests, so at this time, I'd move for approval, please.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Okay, item K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 3800 Northwest 34th from PUD 131 to S PUD 1584. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak?
And yet I see someone approaching us as if they'd like to speak. Please do.
Just to hear the answer to questions. Charles Allen with Allen Engineering, representing the applicant. This is half of, is almost an acre and a half, and it's half of the original PUD 131. It has 28 of the 56 units that were approved for that development. Happy to answer any questions.
So if I'm reading that right, you're doing a quadplex there?
Yes, seven quadplex.
Uh huh. Can I ask why that approach? Like, why the quadplex? We don't often see that.
Just the density, trying to get the density up. This is a product we use in Bethany, very popular.
I, I say this because I'm a huge fan of fourplexes and having lived in, living in one. It's just something I'd like to see more of, so I'm glad to see you taking that approach. So I would move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, 11L is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval. Rezoning 12800 North MacArthur from R1 to S PUD 1586. Councilwoman Stonecifer, no one has signed up to speak?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was approved by planning. There are no protests, so at this time, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11M is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8250.15 Moderate Impact Institutional in the I2 Moderate Industrial and AE1 Airport Overlay. That's at 5919 Philip J. Roads. Councilman Carter.
I see we have someone here to talk.
Good morning. Marsha Galant, MA Plus Architecture, 4000 North Glass and Boulevard. I do have representatives from the Airport Trust and Putnam City Public Schools here as well, in case you would like to hear them speak. But essentially, we are, the Putnam City Aviation Program would like to move their program out to Wiley Post Airport. There's an existing building. It's currently being leased by the FAA, and the Putnam City Schools would like to take over the second floor of the building for their aviation program to be on the airport to give the students that immersive experience.
Does anyone want to speak on this? Okay, I've had some, some amazing meetings with Ms. Hensley and learned a lot about this program and just the, the amount of information that she's wanting to bring into the schools and how she's already expanded it to the three major high schools in Putnam City. So I'm really excited to see this thing actually get forward. So I'm going to move for approval, and then if approved, I'd like to move for an emergency, please.
Okay. So this is the most, motion for approval. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then, and then now you'd like to make a motion for the emergency?
I would. Ms. Hensley, you sure you don't want to say something?
I would, I would be happy to.
She's extremely excited about this, if you can't tell. And I'd love to just let her talk for a second about it.
Thank you so much for voting for this. At Putnam City, we started this aviation program a couple of years ago, and as you all well know, that aviation is a hot topic in Oklahoma right now. And so we have a school that is diverse, it is low income, and we have students who could do so much with this opportunity. And we have so many students who are really excited about the aviation industry. Number one, quite a bit of things in the aviation industry does not require a college degree, so they can go straight from our school with certifications and walk right into a job. As a matter of fact, we had four students, last year, first school in Oklahoma, we partnered with AAR, and we had four interns over the summer, and these four students were paid $15 an hour. And at the end of the summer, every one of them were offered a job to come back after their senior year and work at this company. So we are doing our best at Putnam City to put kids into a career path that they can make high wage in a high-demand job. And so going out to Wiley Post, we will be the first school that's actually in an airport. Norman's hard on our heels, but we'll beat them. But we, it excites kids to be out at the airport. Plus, we get more partners that way. They see that we're out there, and they want to be a part of this. And so this passage, it just means so much because we can get into that building before the end of school, and our seniors this year can have a little taste of what it's going to look like going forward. And our students are so excited to be out there. So thank you for this opportunity. As we create a workforce for Oklahoma, we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for me? All right, and it's nice to meet you, Mayor. We've been Facebook friends for a while, so it's nice to meet you.
So it's my understanding, though, this isn't just about aviation in the sense of we're training pilots. We're training mechanics. We're training all of the above.
Right. We have two separate, clear pathways that we are doing for an A and P that will allow our students to make a lot of money with that, with that certification. And then we also have a flight pathway. And so students come into our program as sophomores, and if they work at it and if they want it, by the end of their senior year, they can have their private pilot's license. So it's both ways. We are putting it out there for flight and for maintenance, and there's a lot of career pathways in either one of those things.
And if they want to take it further, you've partnered with Metro Tech and some of our other tech schools to really help kind of expand their...
Yes, we are, as a matter of fact, I just had a meeting with Metro Tech yesterday, and they are trying to get it approved that if our seniors went to Metro Tech that 13th year's, what they call it in Career Tech, then they would be going there tuition-free. So for our kids, that's a huge boon because, you know, sometimes the economics of it prevents them from going on. So if they can get to Metro Tech and do that free of charge, then we, Metro Tech is anxious for our students to come that way. So we are working on that partnership. Metro Tech is also working on the metrics of what our students would need to know, so we are getting real specific in our maintenance program. So our students are going to have a lot of those skills as they walk out of our program that Metro Tech will accept, and it will shorten their time from 18 months to 12 months in order to have that certification from Metro Tech. So it's a really great partnership that they are working with us, and hopefully by spring break, we'll have that cinched up that our kids can go to Metro Tech for free.
Thank you so much for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd move for an emergency approval.
All right, so this is for the emergency. We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously and with the necessary seven affirmative votes. All right, 11N is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing three reserved parking spaces for the physically disabled on the north side of Coal Court near Chertel. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I will move for approval.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11O is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings where this has been considered. This regards flood control and amends the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, Chapter 16. So we already had a presentation and a public hearing. We could adopt the ordinance change today if the council so desired. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 11P is an ordinance on final hearing relating to nuisances. This was presented at our last meeting. I believe it is staff's recommendation and desire that we consider it emergency here, and so only consider it at two meetings. So council could adopt today and then consider an emergency motion. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
I'll move for the emergency.
All right, let's bring that up then. We have a motion and a second on the emergency. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the necessary seven affirmative votes. Okay, that brings us to item Q. This is a public hearing on the updated sign code. This was presented at our last meeting. We do have one resident who signed up to speak under the public hearing today, and
Good morning. My name is Scott Minton. I'm 1613 Gray Fox Run, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for ONQ. I've been in this chamber many times, so I appreciate you allowing me to speak this morning. I just want to give my opposition to this code. I believe it decreases the size of signs, it decreases the height of signs, it makes businesses like mine harder to see from the interstate as you're traveling down the highway. For Oklahoma City residents, most of them know where their favorite convenience store is, hopefully their favorite ONQ is. But for people passing through, this is a very busy interstate city. I think that this code diminishes our ability to market to people traveling down the road, give them time to exit safely off of the interstate. So we do not like this version of the code, but I understand the need to get rid of a lot of these dilapidated signs, not allow that to occur in Oklahoma City. But stores like mine take very good care of our properties and very good care of our signage, so I just want to say that I oppose this sign change code. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, well, that, being the only person who signed up, will conclude our public hearing on that item. And advance now to 11R. This is the public hearing regarding an ordinance change that was proposed in our last, oh, this is related, this also, this relates to the fees on the sign code. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
I'd like to say a couple of words. I know when this was introduced at the last meeting, I had some concerns, and I want to continue to express my concerns with the fact that now with us proposing a new fee to permit for temporary signs in certain right-of-ways, there are still right-of-signs in the right-of-way all over this city, including downtown, for a vote that took place in December. Therefore, looking at the new fee, $25 per permit, each permit will cover multiple signs plus 25 cents for each required sticker. So that means, again, just for clarification, each one of those signs would need a sticker in order for them to be placed in the right-of-way. That could be very costly to people who don't have a lot of funds that may be running for office, that may be helping a candidate, that may need help. So in my opinion, again, these fees are discounting abilities for people to, and creating limitations and barriers for a lot of our community to participate in being able to place those signs. And I know we went through this conversation last week, yes, I get it, you can put a sign in your yard all day, you can put as many signs as you want to in your yard all day, but the fact remains, in certain communities, we rely on signs around that are placed within certain commercial areas, that are placed in certain right-of-ways, because that's where you see them. And that's how you know that an election is coming, that's how you know possibly who those candidates are, that's how you know what those questions may be that you are asked to participate in when it comes to time to exercise your right to vote. So for us to limit folks being able to participate and now have to purchase a permit with required stickers, I do not agree with, and I will not be supporting that. So I will continue to speak my opposition against this required fees, because again, this is a barrier and a limitation for people. And I'm just thinking about myself when I ran the first time and didn't know, wasn't a candidate, never thought about being a candidate, but learning these things as you go, and learning how you have to raise money and all of those things that come along with it, and signs are not cheap. So being, having to have to pay a fee and provide stickers on top of that with extra fees can become quite costly. So I just wanted to make that public comment.
All right. That closes our public hearing then on the fees. Item R, which means we'll advance to item S. S1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, and it looks like someone has signed up to speak on item, item A, 709 Northeast 3rd Street.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Just need more time to finish with the weather, due to the weather.
I'm sorry?
She's asking for more time to get where she needs to be due to the weather, because we did have some weather increments that happened. Incliment weather that happened within the last couple of weeks, so I'm hoping we can help to extend her that grace for that. And then, Ms. Williams, please do me a favor and stay in contact with Mr. Chad if you haven't already, I'm sure you have, but if you'll stay in contact with him, and I'll be reaching out to you within the next week to see where we are on this. But I am going to ask, due to the time in helping Ms. Williams, that we as a city council help extend her that grace that she needs, especially because of what we had to experience the last couple of weeks, that, you know, no fault to her, but that does provide a limitation for her to be able to get the things that she needs as far as being able to get this work done. So I will ask that we extend her that grace for a couple more weeks.
All right, so the request is for a deferral of item 11S1A for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, no one else has signed up to speak on this dilapidated structures hearing, so we're left with just item A, which we can adjudicate in the resolution found at S2, declaring that the structure, this structure is, I'm sorry, what, item B, I meant, yes, declaring that that structure is dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11T1 is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
All right, so we'll advance to the resolution found at T2, declaring that the structures We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry? You're on the list of unsecured structures?
Yes.
Sure, sure. Let's hold the vote for a moment, and we, there's generally slips up front, but I know this is probably your first time. Would you state your name and address and what item you're pitching on?
Aaron Moses, 4707 South Macanley Avenue.
Okay, and that's item D, it looks like?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I got everything secured and boarded up, it has a structural wire, but...
Have you been able to communicate with code enforcement about getting it boarded up? Have you been able to communicate with code enforcement about getting it boarded up and secured? Not yet. Chad, can you speak to what you all need?
Sure, we'll just have to go inspect the property.
Okay.
Is all we'll need, so we can get out probably this afternoon and take a look at it and from that.
Okay. I'll, so I know that if we pass this, they're not going to take any action right away, and they can administratively remove it, so I'm going to keep it on this docket, but then you all can follow up and get it removed once they come out and inspect it.
Okay.
Thank you. And if, yeah, if you need his information, you guys can trade.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the resolution at T2, and we can now cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11U1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here. So we'll bring up a motion to defer item 11U1C for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
All right, so we'll go on then to the resolution found at U2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned, except for those previously struck or deferred. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes, passes unanimously. All right, item 11V1 is a public hearing regarding a resolution authorizing acceptance of the joint award for the 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $518,000. Item 2 is a resolution, maybe before we get to the public hearing, well, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
All right, well, then we'll go ahead and dispense with the public hearing, but we'll hear a little bit more about this perhaps. Oh, there is no present.
No, this was presented previously, I think it was at the January 2nd meeting, and this is just a public hearing that's required for this grant, so it's the same item that was presented previously.
Got it, okay. So then, V2 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the joint award, and if there's no comments from council, we can consider the item. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to one. Okay, item W, somewhat different, that we have kind of a choice here, and we'll have some residents who will speak, and then we'll see what motions the council makes. But the choice is between W1 or W2. W1 is to deny a request from Terracan Consultants for a public recreation or natural preservation area statement related to its application on behalf of Medical Waste Services to operate a regulated medical waste transfer station at 3903 Northeast 23rd near Diggs Park. The other option would be a resolution stating that the medical waste transfer station is not expected to adversely affect Diggs Park. We have quite a few residents who've signed up to speak, and if that's the, if that's okay with the council, maybe we can start there. This is in Ward 7. Councilwoman Nice, how would you wish to proceed?
I would like to hear from the residents, but I want to give a little background before we hear from them. I think it's quite interesting that this item appears as an item for separate vote. When this came before us in June, June 6th on the agenda, it was a part of the consent docket. So I'm quite confused why now that we're showing favoritism toward putting it outside of the consent docket. Also, the fact that we have Terracan Consultants, and I think it's very interesting to note that we have a contract for consulting services with Terracan Consultants that we approved in August, on August 15th, 2023, on our agenda, and now there is an ask, and we received information from our Assistant City Manager to look at and consider the things that had been requested unanimously and recommended unanimously from our Parks Commission. And also, now that it seems as if the process is changing mid-review of this process that had happened before, because in the meantime, we have set an internal procedure in place where in the future, the Parks and Planning Departments will coordinate the sequence of actions to ensure that any required zoning of a facility would be determined prior to council, considering the issuance of a letter of no adverse impact on a park. So these are my concerns as we continue to look at the impacts of our communities, the effects of inequity, and the issue of environmental justice within the area of northeast Oklahoma City. So with that, I would love to hear from the residents who signed up to speak, and I think it's important to note that, again, these residents showed up in June, these residents showed up at the Parks Commission meeting, I was one of those residents that showed up at the Parks Commission meeting in November, these residents showed up to the Parks Commission meeting in December, and these residents are here today to express their concern continuously about the negative impacts that continue to happen within the walls of northeast Oklahoma City. And again, the barrier of what is taking place, again, in my opinion, is the fact that as we look at these devastating ways, and when we talked about this in June, we understood how the process had not fully worked itself through. And learning after the fact that our planning department sat down and just decided to say, well, yeah, just move it, just move it up north and you're good. And now we have a residential community still concerned about what is happening. And when you look at the Code of Ethics for planters, these are not things that are part of the Code of Ethics. We are supposed to protect these disadvantaged and communities pertaining to environmental justice, and we are not doing that. So I will ask that we hear from the residents who have signed up to speak and move forward from there.
All right, George Smith?
Good morning. My name is George Smith, and I serve as the mayor of the town of Forest Park. As you may or may not know, Oklahoma City surrounds Forest Park on the east side of Bartell Road, on the north side, Northeast 50th Street, on the south side, on Northeast 30th Street, and on the west side, Bryant Avenue and a part I-35. Right now, we're in a growth mode in Forest Park. As a matter of fact, this evening, I'll be entertaining a motion, but we're annexing some more property in the Forest Park so that we can increase our growth and increase our sales tax revenue. On the south side of Forest Park is where the Terracan Consultants want to establish their business. The south side of Forest Park is undeveloped land, and we're hoping to develop that into some more luxury homes than we have in Forest Park. And to have that business there that would be adjacent to and contiguous to Forest Park could probably diminish the sales, the sales tax of being the property taxes and the property values of that particular area. Now, I know that you all are sovereign, and you can do the things that vote to make the city the best you can make it, but I would appreciate, and I think the residents of Forest Park would appreciate, that we would be in partnership when we start establishing businesses... when you're contiguous to another community. We already have businesses on Northeast 23rd that are contiguous to the south side of Forest Park, where there was a big fire a couple of years ago, where there was an auto salvage place. Now, the auto salvage place, the cars had gasoline in them. They still had tires on them. The place is not properly secured, so my residents, when they look out their back window, they're looking at a bunch of old cars that are stacked up in that property and stuff. So there's been no consideration, or if you have any type of zoning laws, they weren't applied to those businesses there. So on top of the salvage yard place you have there...
30 seconds remaining.
Now you want to put a Terracan waste, medical waste there. So we're asking that you vote to deny this request. That's why we're up here today. And I would like to talk to Nikki Nice and more about some of the things we're doing in Forest Park so that you can share those with the council. Let them know that we can work in harmony, but we want to do this so that we won't be degraded in our property as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Bradley Boyce?
Morning, y'all. My name is Bradley Boyce. I live on 124 Northwest 16th Street. My concern with this facility is that we continue to have sort of an ambiguity about what constitutes waste as defined by Terracan themselves. And there are some concerns, obviously, with Terracan's being in the petroleum industry. I just wonder if there's four of the five super sites are already for these types of dump facilities already in the east side. Is it either negligence, or is it an intent to continuously put these things there? Are we not aware that these things continuously affect the east side or not? Because to me, what is established here is sort of a pattern of behavior, where we're consistently seeing these types of facilities just be offered to the east side. And it seems just disproportionate that we can't think of anywhere else to put these things that harm the citizenry of that particular part of the city over and over again. It just... I mean, if this... If you close your eyes and I ask you to imagine this facility in Nichols Hills, and if you for one second find that a ridiculous notion or a crazy notion, then it shouldn't be where it's proposed either. Is this a matter of it's there because of some kind of convenience? I mean, I guess me and a lot of people just don't understand why these things continuously happen to a particular part of the city that we find just seems to be, for better or worse words, the dumping ground of the city. I mean, if you can't put it in Nichols Hills, then it shouldn't be where it is either. I mean, this is close to a park. And the information that you can gather is extremely inconsistent with harm. I mean, if I can Google it, and I can't come up with any things that tell me... I mean, they say it's safe, but again, the wording of even the word "waste" in quotations in itself, in their own findings, seems to be inconsistent with anything relative at all to that particular word, "safe." So what I would ask is, if you can't close your eyes and imagine that you could put this in a well-to-do park, in a well-to-do area, then it's got to just be simply a matter of... Certain people don't seem to matter as much as others in certain areas of the city. And again, I'll use that word "pattern."
30 seconds, please.
Seems to be a consistent pattern of behavior that brings this upon the east side relative to other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Woods?
Thank you for having me. My name is Gary Woods. My address is 8820 Northeastern Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I also serve as on the Board of Park Commissioners, Ward 7. In December, the Board of Park Commissioners voted unanimously that this medical waste facility would cause harm to the park there at Diggs Park. And when we looked at it specifically, we had to step outside of what, number one, what our mission is as Board of Park Commissioners, what we're trying to do as a city as it relates to having parks to anchor communities with the greater emphasis on health and wellness. Of course, every last one of you sitting here in City Council, you have appointed us to make recommendations to you. And there wasn't a single park commissioner who thought that this park being in close proximity to Diggs... Excuse me, this medical waste facility being in close proximity to Diggs Park would be a good thing. So when we think about it as well, we listen to your constituents as well as we listen to some environmentalist advocates, and they all came up with a number of different things that made us begin to think differently, specifically as it relates to the cumulative effects of a medical waste facility in addition to some of the other environmental challenges that exist in the area. Didn't realize this, but it got a great education as it relates to this zip code being the highest rates of cancer and autoimmune disease. And when you think about it, it also has the poor air quality. There's a significant amount of air pollution in this area. The landfill itself contributes to a significant amount of plastic waste that, as a result of a lot of, as an example, Walmart bags that get blown around. We also have to think about the smell that exists in the area as well. Then also, too, the river that runs through that side of town, the east side, it has now been reduced to simply runoff, and you have to think about the impact on smell, air quality, as well as the impact on wildlife, because a lot of the water is being dammed up. And then also, too, there's a significant amount of bird waste as a result of the amount of gulls that hang out in that area. So with that, if we add the medical waste facility to that, we're thinking about heavy trucks, we're thinking about diesel emissions, as well as it being in close proximity to children, close proximity to those that we're trying to endorse health and wellness. That's kind of where a lot of our decisions came from, and that's why we voted unanimously that this would not be a good thing. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Gary. Nathaniel Batchelder?
Well, thank you, and I am also here to support denial of the motion. When I lived on Coltrane Road, I voted at 36th and Coltrane. I know that neighborhood, and I worked out at the zoo, but that's another story. A medical waste transfer station will be cited in a neighborhood near a public park in northeast Oklahoma City? Really? Surely, we can think about this a little longer. I would say our society, indeed our nation, owes sensitivity and maybe redemption to minority communities that have suffered abominations. It's a new day, and there's a new way, and Oklahoma City needs to do better. I thought this was going to be outdoors with some people, and so I made a sign. And I know I'm not supposed to show a sign in the City Council meeting, so I'm going to sit down now and thank you all for my minute.
Thank you. DeShawn Waiter? I apologize. Watson? Walton, yes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm DeShawn Walton. I live in Forest Park, which is adjacent to the Terracan facility. I sat back there, and I listened to Councilwoman Nice and Mr. Woods, that's on the Parks and Recreation, and everyone. And I diddled them continuously back from the first meeting. It's appalling that allegedly, apparently, that someone has a connection with someone to find loopholes to keep bringing this back again and again and again. We could say, "We don't want it in our backyard. Would you want it in your backyard?" Sometime in life, you just have to do the right thing, you know, the people. You know, just do the right thing, because eventually, I may not be here to know, or anyone in the room may not be here to know what to see. But when you do wrong by people, you pay for it. Karma. It's just karma. I'm not privy to not getting karma to me, like no one in this room is. So just consider doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Vernon Craig?
Hi, thank you for your time. I've been a longtime resident of Oklahoma City and on the east side. And I wanted to make a correction, but I think the gentleman earlier spoke beautifully. But I want to make a correction to the fact that he said that I think that this is good, but he was saying not in... He wouldn't want this in Nichols Hills. Well, I went to the meeting where the Parks Department denied this request unanimously, and I provided them information that I found on a federal government website. This is your federal government that says it does not matter where you put this thing. It is not environmentally safe. It doesn't matter... There's several different ways of method of disposal. It doesn't matter how you do it, whether you microwave this stuff, whether you incinerate it, you pour bleach on it, it doesn't matter. It says it is still toxic. It is... It causes airborne pathogens. It contaminates the groundwater. It infects the people that live there, infects the livestock. And you're going to put this by a park, and there's groundwater everywhere. And so if we can't appeal to your moral fiber, then I'd at least say, "Think about the economic impacts," because it's going to affect the cost of the city and its residents, whether it costs them on their medical bills or other cost of the city lawsuits, or whatever it is. It's going to affect everyone, and I just want to remind everybody that you guys are elected officials. This is for the public. You're for the people, by the people. Think of it that way. Would you want this by your house? And the other thing I want to say real quick is, it doesn't have to be in Oklahoma City. I don't think this should be on the back of Oklahoma City. This could be somewhere rural, where we don't plan on economic development for a long time. Somewhere away from the city, and we know it's away from other people because it's in a rural area. It doesn't have to be near anyone. And that's it. I can see my time, and thank you. Oh, one other thing real quick, I'm sorry. On this website, like I said, from the government, this is at the NIH.com, and the address is HTTPS www.ncbi.nlm.nih.gov backslash PMC dash articles dash backslash PMC 9565833. That's just in case anyone wanted to look that up. I also gave that to the other City Council members that were at the park meeting. And then lastly, this is from the medicalwasteprofessionals.com website, where this says...
We're at the time.
I'm sorry, just give me a few more seconds here. It says that this medical waste can include PCBs, forever plastics, HIV hepatitis B and C, parasitic infections, tuberculosis infections, skin infections, cholera, airborne pollution, and other pathogens. So like I said, just think about all the things that would impact you and your citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. M. Bailey Stevenson?
Hello, my name is Bailey Stevenson, and I work with Local Environmental Action Demanded. We are an environmental nonprofit that was formed to raise awareness about the Tar Creek Superfund Site. If you're unfamiliar with the Tar Creek Superfund Site, it is the largest and most complex superfund site in the United States, and it is located in northeastern Oklahoma. In the area where I work, there actually have, in the past, children played in parks that were... The sandboxes were filled with the disposed and the waste, the leftover waste from the mines. And they did this because they were told that it was safe. They were told that it was harmless. And this is kind of the way that this happens, that people are told that these things are safe and harmless, but then we later find out that they actually are long-term effects. And the people that live in this area where I work have actually had to be relocated. Many of them have had to be relocated from their homes because it is so toxic. This is what happens when private entities are prioritized over communities. And what I want to emphasize here is I'm requesting you to deny Terracan's request because the community has made it very clear that they do not want this site in their neighborhoods, and they do not want it in their homes. And additionally, the research shows that this form of transportation is actually the worst method of medical waste disposal because of the high possibility of leakage, also because of escape gases that add to air pollution, and also because of the diesel fumes from the transportation. Terracan Medical Waste Services LLC, who hired Terracan, said that this medical waste facility will require the 24-hour refrigeration, 24-hour operated trucks that refrigerate the medical waste. What this means is that there will be trucks operating 24 hours a day at this site within less than half a mile from the park. There is no question that these trucks will add to air pollution and higher rates of industrial traffic. And this is in an area that already has higher rates of air pollution and asthma. So I'm asking you to side with the evidence, which clearly shows that this medical waste transfer facility will have a negative impact on Diggs Park and the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Jason Lo?
Good morning, Council. I have to confess, I have mixed emotions about being here today because I should be on my way to a funeral for a great man, Mr. Bob Ravitz, the former Oklahoma County Public Defender, a man who fought for the voiceless. And I think, and I know, he would be proud that I'm here today, fighting for my community. He's a person that hired me as a lawyer, gave me my first job as a lawyer, and also was my law school professor, and he was such a great man. But I'm here to fight for my community, and I believe that approving this facility in Forest Park would totally destroy Forest Park. It is a thriving community. It's a beautiful community. We have a wonderful... I don't know if you've been in Forest Park, but we have a wonderful golf course, Twin Peaks, wonderful golf course. I ask you, Council, please deny this request. Do not destroy this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chandler Watson?
Good morning. How are y'all? I can only speak from experience, and the things I've done over in that side of town is like I live in Old Douglas High School, but I bike all over the city. And when I say bike, I mean actually bike. I really see what's going on. I get out and I talk to the kids. I even worked at a job to where I delivered to Garden Diggs Head Start. That's what nobody's mentioning about this park, that there is a head start there where kids go. I've dropped off material for these kids. I see their faces, seen them play basketball. They ask me questions about my tattoos, like, "Why'd you do that?" I'm like, "I got..." I'm like, I got bored. But the other thing about it is it just, the story continues on and on. Like she was saying up in Miami, Oklahoma, I knew somebody who lived up there from that superfund site. She had breast cancer. They had to leave. The water is now contaminated in Grand Lake, which nobody really knows about. What's going to happen here? What will happen to us all? 24-hour trucks, kids. I even hunt, and I bite through Forest Park. There's a nice turkey population, there's some deer, and I'm like, oh, if it was only season, but you can't really hunt in the city. But let's say the water gets contaminated, these deer go out further, people in other communities, other parts, other wards eat that animal, then you're contaminated too. So it's not just affecting this part of town, it'll affect everybody, whether you know it or not. Makes me wonder who's on the take, not saying maybe it's you. I mean, I look at history, I look at every single level of politicians, elected people. My parents served this country, served the people. That's all I got to say. My name is Chandler Watson, I can see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Zenifun Warrior Junior?
Yes, good morning, Zenifun Warrior, 5712 North Lottie Avenue. My family owns a property, I'm the executor of a particular trust of land that's just southeast of the property within Oklahoma City. And as, just as the city has had a history of working with surrounding municipalities such as Village, such as Nichols Hills, I would hope that we extend the same privileges to Forest Park also, that particular area. And speaking as a representative of a coalition of the northeast Oklahoma City Neighborhood Coalition, I would like to speak and express my concern about the particular proposed development, and feel like that the, this area of town, along with the entire all of Oklahoma City, is in the process of revitalization. There's a lot of different developments that are going on, every which direction, all four different types of directions. And that particular part, part of town, there is some need for, also particularly some need for some redevelopment with the housing, residential development. I feel like this particular location, if this particular location doesn't allow it to be there, it would really hurt the revitalization and the various developments and having some development occurring within particular area. We need some residential development, particular area. Have this particular facility is really going to be very detrimental to some continued residential development in all areas, all four quadrants of the area, particular facility. So I would encourage you that you would vote to deny this medical waste facility to be a place at this particular site. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the residents who have signed up to speak. So now we, unless there's any further comments from council, we could take a motion and we'll entertain whichever one, I suppose, is moved first.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to all of those who were present to speak. Your voice is important, and for, for us to hear from our Parks Commissioner to understand again, these, the meetings, and these are the folks that we appoint to these such bodies. So I would ask that we move forward with W1 to deny the request, and move forward with the recommendation that the Parks Commissioners have brought forward, and that our community neighbors have asked us politely to adhere to.
Okay, so the motion is for item 11W1. This is to deny the request from TerraCon Consultants. And we need to bring that up virtually.
So just to clarify, because I'm a dumb-dumb, a yes vote means I'm denying it.
We don't have a second yet, but I was going to say all those things.
You know, it's that law school part, okay.
All right, we'll get to that. All right, we have a motion in a second. When it is possible, cast your votes. And yes, Councilman Cooper. So a yes vote, in this case, is to deny the request. If there's any questions, then ask them now. But yes, a yes vote denies the request. Passes unanimously. Didn't come up on my screen, but it came up there. So it passed unanimously, the request is denied.
And if you don't mind, I want to say to the residents, while you're thanking us, this is, I want to thank you. Because had you not shown up and appealed to those who may not have all of the knowledge that we need to make that decision, we wouldn't be able to do that. So thank you. This is what democracy looks like, for us to all be at the table and express our opinions. So thank you. I, thank you.
Yes, so on this item, just one thing I wanted to clarify, and I didn't want to have any interference on the vote, but the item came back on individual considerations because there's options that were on here, there were two options, and we didn't have the ability to do that on the consent docket, just put the two items on there, so that's why it came back as individual consideration. Then I also wanted to note that the planning staff didn't present changing the zoning as an option to the applicant, they just responded to the applicant, were working with the applicant, just like they do any other applicant. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't to try to undermine this or make this easier in some way, it was just doing their jobs.
I would disagree, hopefully disagree with that. And I disagree with that because of the fact, again, if that were the case, this would have been on the consent docket, just as it was before, because that was still the same type of, of ask for us to approve or deny. And this recommendation had already been brought forward, and we've done plenty of times with boards, commissions, and trusts to just put these things on the consent docket as they've come forward with that recommendation, without us having to decide if we would approve or deny that request. So I will respectfully disagree with that. And I think it's, it's very, very selective of how this, this item appeared on the agenda. And when this meeting happened in December, everyone was told that this would appear on the January 16th agenda. So we've all been expecting this to appear on the January 16th agenda, and it's very timely that all of this information came a week before January 30th for the agenda for us to vote and, and talk through. So I would respectfully disagree with that because we shouldn't have been here, and these folks should have been here on the 16th if that was the case.
All right, next item is 11X1. This is a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters for fiscal year 2023, 2024. This is retroactive to July 1st of 2023. Staff has not requested an executive session. I will say, I know how much work this always requires, and I certainly thank the city manager and his team for bringing us to this point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I want to mention too, that I appreciate the, all of the team that's worked together on negotiations, on the city side as well as on the IFF side, went through this before and had some challenges with it and came back together and found a solution. So I do appreciate everyone's work on this.
All right, so we could take a motion on item X1. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Y1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Agnello v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested an executive session. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Z1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Kraus v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested an executive session. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AA1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Quillen v. City of OKC. And Bishop Construction's staff has not requested an executive session. Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11AB is to just have an executive session on advice of municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding Chaney and Chaney v. City of OKC. So this would just be a vote to go into executive session, which we'll handle at the end of our other business. Did everyone get this?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to go into executive session, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll handle that, as I said, at the end of our other business. All right, item AC1, our claims recommended for denial, we can take them with one motion. Staff has not requested executive session. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AD, our claims recommended for approval, we can take items A through C with one motion, and staff has not requested an executive session. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. And then while we're in a voting mood, let's return to item 3D2. So this would be an executive session to discuss item 3D1, and right now, we would just be taking a vote to go into executive session, which we'll handle with the other executive session we already approved. So I would ask if we would put up a motion for that. Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we've got two executive sessions to do, and potential return for one vote on a resolution. But first, comments from council, item 12, word one.
None today, sir, thank you.
Word two.
Yes, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Marilyn Dillon and our Assistant City Manager, slash Director of Embark, Jason Fairbrush. And I believe there's another Embark staff person named Becky, and my gratitude to those folk for helping to get my mother via Embark during, via our mobility management services, to connect her to physical therapy. You know, when she fell in December and, you know, fractured her wrist in the way that she did, I would go out there to get her to the doctor's appointments in Midwest City, get her her prescriptions, rearrange meetings to do that. But there's only so many times that people can, you know, take off work or do these things to, even when it's a loved one, even when it's one's mother, right? And Embark just happened to hear me say that concern that I had at a transit meeting, and sure enough, Jason and Dr. Dillon came to me after the meeting, and they're like, you know, your mom might live within the radius of one of the bus services out in Midwest City, and if that's the case, then we provide these mobility services. And so my mom was able to get to her first physical therapy appointment yesterday, and she's doing well. And I, it just, it really matters a lot to me that we provide that service. Almost any time Dr. Dillon comes to the Transit Trust and provides updates on the work she's doing, I'm reduced to tears. And I guess I never quite thought, since my mom lives in Midwest City, I'm so used to associating Embark with Oklahoma City. Sometimes I forget Route 15, right, and these other routes that are serving the folk who are going to Rose State or what have you. I never thought that Embark would be able to serve my mom in that way, and it did, and that was a vital medical service for her. For anyone else who might need access to our daily living centers, or you have an interim urgent need service, or a non-emergency medical, excuse me, even Shopping Shuttle, or Embark Well to connect to our wellness centers, the Maps for Wellness Centers, Congregate Mills, please call the following number, 405-297-2583. That number again is 405-297-2583. You can Google Embark Mobility Management to learn more about the different services we provide, particularly for individuals aged 60 and older. So just extreme gratitude in that moment. On a bit of a lighter note, I believe the Academy Awards released their nominations last week of Best Picture and these things. A bit closer to home, the Oklahoma Film Critics Circle, which was founded in 2006, we, and I serve on that circle, we released our list of the best films and best actor and actress. We received screeners from the movie studios, starting at about the end of October, of movies they would like for us to consider for Best Documentary, Best International Film, Best Animated Film, and it's just kind of Christmas at my house getting all these screeners. But they also invite us to advanced screenings of films. One of the films they invited us to watch ahead of time was the one that we awarded Best Picture, Killers of the Flower Moon, which, as you all know, the studio, Martin Scorsese, the director, shot here in Oklahoma, Leonardo DiCaprio was here. And we chose Killers of the Flower Moon as the Best Picture. I did not, my, but I did choose Lily Gladstone, who, if you've not seen her performance in that film, it is quite worth your time. And then there's the agreement with my Film Critics Circle, we both voted for her. Now, I will say, it's a tie for me, Lily and Killers of the Flower Moon, but the performances that we see in Zone of Interest, and, what's the other one? Zone of Interest and Anatomy of a Fall from Sandra Heuler. One year, two movies, riveting performances. So anyway, you can go do a little Google search of Oklahoma Film Critics Circle, and you can see the, the full list. I'll just conclude by saying this, while that might sound like a trivial thing, the Oklahoma Film Critics Circle, back in '06, when we formed this organization, we often did not, we, unless you worked for the Oklahoman or maybe the Tulsa World, maybe you got to see some of these smaller films before they came out. Maybe you got the screeners, but most likely you didn't. And so a lot of our film critics were creating these year-end lists without actually having access to smaller films, international films. And so collectively, we pulled our resources to create this organization, and it has endured since 2006. It's my honor to serve Vice President and President of this organization, and it is super, super cool to see Oklahoma Film Critics Circle in national news whenever we release our top list, like, you know, 20th largest city or something. So thank you.
Thank you. Word four. Word five?
I just want to say thank you to the Cascada Lakes and the Lake Ridge Run, HOA Associations who had me come out in the last week and speak. You all have been to HOA meetings where it's you and two people and 47 cookies and some Kool-Aid, but both of these were very well attended by people who had great questions and were engaged, and so it was nice to see the turnout in Word five. Thank you.
Word six?
Yeah, first I just want to say thank you to all of the city staff, and I know a lot of our service agencies were involved in the organization of this year's Point in Time Count, which was last Thursday. This is the activity annual census count of people experiencing homelessness in Oklahoma City. And I know our planning department is very involved in, in corralling that effort, as well as I, when I went for my shift on Thursday, I saw some city staff that were there participating as volunteers, taking surveys. And so it was exciting to see even a deeper level of participation, you know, beyond just the sort of implementation, and also congratulations. And also, congratulations to the folks who implemented it, because this year was, they deployed an app to take the survey instead of doing paper surveys. And it seemed like everyone was a little nervous to roll out a new sort of way of doing the survey, but they did a great job, and it sounds like a lot of easier work on the backend for them of going through all the data and just a really huge effort, and really appreciate everyone who took part in that. And then also, on Saturday, I got to attend a litter blitz that Oklahoma City Beautiful hosted down at South Rotary Park. It was very cold and a little unpleasant, but here collectively, I think there were almost 20-plus people there, collectively picked up 25-plus bags of litter from around the park. And coming up, I know Oklahoma City Beautiful is partnering with the city's Waterway Clean Sweep Initiative to specifically target certain wetlands and waterways within the city to make sure that there's no debris and litter getting caught up in those. And so that event is coming up on the 17th of February between 9:00 AM and noon at Oliver Park, and hopefully, the weather will be a little kinder, but either way, still a really big impact for not a lot of time invested as an individual. It's very satisfying to sort of see how just putting in a little bit of time can make a big difference. And then finally, and coming up in a few weeks, on the, on February 12th, it's a Monday afternoon at 3:00 PM, the Homeless Alliance, along with some other organizations, are hosting their annual memorial for people who have died while experiencing homelessness within the last year. This year, they're doing it, usually, I believe it takes place around the solstice, but I think just there's so much going on in December for so many people that work in this space that they delayed it until this coming month. And so they'll host that vigil at the day shelter at 3:00 PM on Monday, February 12th. It sounds like they were, they collected about 70 names of people this past year in 2023 who died while living outside, and is really a time to hold space for them and make sure that we honor the life of people, even if they didn't have family or other communities to hold space and do a memorial for them. So if you're interested in attending, it's open to the public and should be a nice space to reflect and think about how we can work better as a society to prevent that experience for people.
Ward 7?
Yes. First, I wanted to say that we had a really good cold turnout for the parade on Saturday. It was 22 degrees outside, so I tell you, by the end of being outside that long for the parade, I think quite a few of us could not feel our fingers or toes. But being able to honor the legacy of Dr. King is always important for us throughout our country. And again, it's, in my opinion, it's very special because of the relationship that he had and familiarity he had with Oklahoma City. And I don't think a lot of cities can say that. Just a few can say they've had intimate experiences with the likes and the legacy of Dr. King. So I wanted to thank all of our city staff that were present and our different departments that were represented in the parade, because it's important for our city as we stand outside of City Hall on Saturday to see the parade, that our city's a participant in it. And they placed in one of the categories, too. So congratulations, City of Oklahoma City, for your award. I can't remember, I think they kind of grouped all of the different organizations together, but I'm sure we can all share that. And to let you know that the events are still happening, because there is an essay and poster contest that will, that's taking place, and that will carry us for April for the Tree of Life Celebration that happens at the state capitol. And if you want information on that, you can go to OKCMLKalliance.org. Wanted to also say thank you to our city staff. We had a really good attendance, over, well over 150 people at our Ward 7 Town Hall last Tuesday. So that tells you, people want to know what's happening within our community and around Ward 7. But we had a lot of our city staff and represented. We had assistant city managers, we had directors, assistant directors, but most importantly, we had our city staff there that work under all of those folks. So we appreciate them. I want to personally say thank you again. I know Ms. Debbie sent a thank you out to them, but I wanted to verbally say thank you, and also thanking Ms. Debbie for her assistance, and to the Mount Olive Baptist Church for hosting in their AG Woodbury Family Life Center. I wanted to make two more comments. As we look towards the last couple of days of January, Thursday kicks off Black History Month, and the organization, it's called ASALA, and the organization is an association for the study of African-American life and history. It was founded in 1915 by Carter G. Woodson, and every year, they come up with a theme. And this year's theme is African-Americans and the Arts. So I would hope that, as a city, we take very careful view of how African-Americans have impacted the arts for Oklahoma City. And we honor the ways that we can celebrate the legacy of the things that happened within Deuce, because that's a part of the arts, as well as the many murals that we have seen placed around our community by artists of African-American hues, because these are the ways that we celebrate culture, these are the ways that we celebrate legacy, and these are the ways that we celebrate Oklahoma City by honoring the things that have taken place from our African-American community. In relation, as we just discussed Diggs Parks, and thank you again for that, I think it's very important for us to understand the historic aspect of that park itself as well, because when Ms. Clara Looper was alive, that's where they would have the Freedom Fiesta. They would go to Diggs Park and celebrate every year. So for us to be able to really reel in on how we protect this same park and protect our, the legacy of the community, and the accomplishments of our community with the Freedom Fiesta is a part of why we have to continue to look at the decisions and how they impact areas within our community and within our walls. And, I mean, I stated it earlier, but I think it's important to note, those who said no to the resolution that was presented with the jail, and a lot of people have been asking, you know, where's the mayor, what's his comment? And I don't know, but I think it was very evident today with the no vote. And I hope that we can ask for that accountability from those who we have not heard from in these specific conversations.
Ward 8?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we lost a great community leader with the passing of Bob Bravitz, and we heard a little bit about Bob today, but last night, I wrote down some thoughts on Bob, and I wanted to read them to you. Bob Bravitz is one of the kindest and most caring people I've ever met. Whenever I talked to him, after the conversation ended, he always left me with a smile on my face. He was kind, he was funny, and he was always concerned about helping others. Most importantly, he changed so many people's lives for the better. When he saw wrong, he fought passionately to make it right. He truly believed in justice for all. To his wife Diane, his children, and his grandchild, all I can say is God bless. Bob, you will be greatly missed, but you will never be forgotten. I would encourage you, if you didn't know anything about Bob, to take a look at the obit. It's with the Smith and Kirke Funeral Home. It is a great read. His family put together a list of things you won't find about Bob in Google, and if you Google Bob, you'll find a lot, but it is well worth reading. The picture, the smile, he had the greatest smile in the world. Like I said, he will be missed, but not forgotten. Secondly, I briefly wanted to thank the Boeing Company for taking Bradley and I yesterday on a tour. Specifically, I wanted to state, thank Todd Polly. He's head of Governmental Affairs. He's a lawyer there. It was amazing to see this state of, state-of-the-art work that we're doing in the areas of engineering and maintenance right here in Oklahoma City. And what I didn't realize is that we, Boeing employs 3,800 employees. It was a great tour. I got to see an old friend of mine, Sandy Coats, who's the senior counsel with Boeing there. But the greatest thing I came away with, and I want to tell everybody, Boeing is hiring. They really need people to apply for jobs, and so if you're looking for a job, they're hiring. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. We're on now Citizens to Be Heard, and we have Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 23280. Brad Hensley was correct. We lose this, on average, of 43 businesses in the state of Oklahoma. Within the last three weeks, we lost two on the northeast side of town. These are businesses that have been there for 20 years. Ever since we got the open carry, marijuana, chewables, you know, that battery company that was coming to Oklahoma. The signing of the papers was 30 days left to go. They canceled. Panasonic, also with 30 days left, they canceled. You know, each one of them companies want to employ 6,000 people. 7,000 of them gonna try to detox before they go have their interview. One month later, after they got hired with these companies, they wouldn't pass the drug test. Only 1,000 out of 7,000 will pass the drug test. You know, about a month ago, over in another country, a young man got up on top of the sixth floor and started killing people. You know what he said? He was inspired by the shooting and killing in the United States. So, you know, I'm trying to stop this open gun carry, marijuana trouble. You can't work on nobody's property, being high, getting your fingers cut off, you messing with chemicals, you'll be getting sued. You can't even go tell them, "Ron, you messing up." They think Ron allowed to shoot them or anybody else. The supervisor can't tell them nothing. The people that hired them can't tell them nothing. HR can't tell them nothing.
30 seconds, please.
All right, young lady.
Sorry.
So they think they're probably coming there to try to kill them. Thank you all.
Thank you. James King.
Hello. How are you? All right. My name's James King, 10200 Holly Headway in Yukon. I'm here today to speak in opposition to the proposed Sunset Amphitheater that is proposed for this Mustang Creek Crossing area where I live. I live in the Westbury North Edition that runs along Southwest 15th Street, between Sarah Road and Morgan Road. My backyard backs up to 15th Street, so I'm concerned about being blocked into our neighborhood as well as the traffic noise that will happen here. My neighborhood only has exits to Southwest 15th Street as well as Sarah Road, and the only entrances to this venue will be Sarah Road and 15th Street. So they did do traffic studies in their plans they submitted to the committee, but so many items were skipped over and were not scrutinized very well. So these plans are horrible for this area, from my opinion. From the sound checks that can happen during school hours, to the traffic blocking the two schools just 1,500 feet behind the main stage, and sound checks that will be able to happen during, while school is in session. So school is going to be disturbed. They got their parking lot reduced by seven acres so they wouldn't have to meet city code requirements of tree island, ida, islands. Not to mention all the noise pollution that'll be heard for miles around. They did cover, their sound monitoring stations will pick up the higher frequencies, but what they didn't talk about is those sound monitoring stations do not pick up the lower frequency sounds, the bass sounds, and those sounds travel for miles and miles around. So these established neighborhoods on all sides of this venue will be very interrupted. There's so many ill-thought-out plans with this venue that I urge you to look into this ahead of time. Look at the documents they submitted to the planning committee and go through them. As I keep going through them, I keep stopping and deep diving into different items that are very concerning to me.
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. I also urge you to possibly form a special committee to go over this in more detail. So many items were skipped in the planning commission that I feel this needs further That's all I have for now. Thank you so much for having me. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay. We have a couple of executive sessions, and we will return. Okay, we have a couple of executive sessions, and we will return. Okay, we have returned, and we are on item 3D1. This is the resolution adopting Human Resources Department recommendations regarding a classification and compensation study related to the positions of city manager, municipal councillor, and city auditor. And of course, all those three positions, their compensation packages can only be controlled by the people who sit on this horseshoe, and that's why we're having this conversation. As previously explained by Amy Madera, who we're going to hear from again in a moment, a study was done with all of the employees, and she'll talk about that, but we're the only ones who can address these three. But to give a little background of how we got here, again, I'd ask Amy to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank, good effort. Good morning, Council. Similar to what we communicated with the city's class comp study, we wanted to take a look at the three appointed positions with the same methodology that we presented with our SEAGLE findings. Of that, we looked at the three positions, compared them to the same 15 cities that we had had within the SEAGLE class comp study. With that, the information that came back was that the, looking at the responses where we had comparable positions, we had 13 responses back for our city manager stating that we were 11% below market for the midpoint position, following the similar component. Any recommendation that was 95% or below the midpoint, we would want to take an investment, or conversely, anyone that was 95% or above, we would leave their position as is. City manager position was 11% below market. Both the city auditor, as well as the municipal councillor, were above market midpoint. So using that data and not, and knowing that we needed to make an adjustment for cost of living or the geographical adjustment, we, our recommendation is a 7% pay increase for the city manager and then no increase for city auditor and municipal councillor. Council had, when we, at the launch of this project two years ago, council had approved that the funding for both the project as well as the reserves set aside for us to be able to fund this position, or fund the outcome of the class comp study. But we wanted to be able to make sure that we cover that information with you all.
So essentially, we have already approved what you presented on earlier today, which is the salary adjustments for potentially up to 5,000 employees, and those will take effect February 1st.
That's correct.
But for this salary study to have any effect on the three specific positions that we oversee, we would have to adopt this resolution.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, we could take a motion on the resolution.
I do have a comment, just to explain my vote, so we can do motions and such. I just, I don't feel like I can support this because I think, to me... because I think, to me, the difference between the salary, bringing it to market versus the other staff salaries. We don't post a range when we're posting this position. So if we're just making an offer to an individual versus posting a range in the case of these other positions that we're currently reviewing and changing the base salary for, to me, it just sort of seems like it really is about attracting an individual to that position versus that we're generally sort of trying to be competitive with what we're sharing when we're posting for the position. So I don't really feel like this is necessary in this moment and just can't support it.
Okay. Well, if there's none...
Just takes a majority, right?
Six. Why don't we take a motion? If we're still... Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And for compensation of the three appointed positions, six affirmative votes are required. Passes six to one. All right, that concludes our business today. We are now at item probably 14. Isn't it always 14? Item 14, adjournment, and we are adjourned. Thank you.